So, to get started here, in a recent Frisco Enterprise discusses, I'm sorry, in a recent Frisco Enterprise discusses passage of Proposition 6 and the $2 billion that would help the state solve its water woes. With Lake Lavine 12 feet below normal, Lake Texoma offline, and current stage three water restrictions, each candidate stated in the article there is still room for the county to help find a solution to the water shortage, and some of their reasons. And we're going to begin with Mark because he's the first one that they quoted in the paper. The first person will come from Mayor Massa.
I guess I can speak really loud. Did everybody hear me in the back?
Absolutely.
Okay. I don't know if they can do that. It's okay. You can hear me okay, right?
Right.
All right. The question says, first, thank you for having me. I know, appreciate you all being up here. It's hard work and a lot of hours campaigning, so I definitely understand that. Appreciate putting your name out there and doing this on probably a daily basis, so great job. So, the first question reads, "To Mark, you said you want to use your influence as an elected official to work with cities on conservation issues. The question is, give us some specific examples of how would you use your influence on cities and their staff to achieve your goal if we already are at stage three restrictions?"
Thank you, Mayor. Water is a serious problem in this area, and there's several things that we need to do to address it. Anyway, how long do we have to answer?
I forgot. We have two minutes, and then Victoria will hold up a sign for y'all just to show that please stop, so we can try to get through as many questions as possible.
You specifically ask about, the mayor specifically asked about conservation. One of the things that we need to do is conserve water. We're the fastest-growing county in the state. Our resources are limited. Lake Lavine is, I think, at about 46% capacity right now. That will get better if we can get some rain, and once we get the pipeline turned on this spring coming from Texoma. Conservation is a key part of the equation because we can't build reservoirs fast enough. In business, we achieve things by communicating, cooperating, and collaborating with our partners. Particularly in construction, we bring together engineers, architects, all various trade contractors together to get a project built, and we have to, we have to work together. I think it's important for the elected officials at the county level to work with the officials, the elected officials, at the city level, and build consensus, cooperate with each other, and work together to achieve goals for the region. So specifically, conservation, I would, you know, you see different cities putting different conservation measures in place, and sometimes I wonder why one city is at stage two, and one's at stage three, et cetera. So I think it's important for an elected official to work with the officials to get everybody on the same page, make sure we're doing all we can to preserve the limited resources we have.
Thank you. A question for Susan.
I'm going to use the microphone since I'm not quite as loud as Mayor. Okay. My question is for Susan. You stated in the same Frisco Enterprise article that the key will be finding and developing alternative water sources. With Texoma offline and Lake Lavine 12 feet down, what alternatives do you have in mind to reach that goal for our needs?
Great, thanks for the question. I think there's many things that we can do to identify alternative water sources. It could be well-water. It could be reclamation of water. We talk about how do we water our parks, for instance. There's a lot that goes on with watering our parks throughout the county, so there's many different ways that we can do that. Putting in a new lake is going to be a 40- to 50-year process, so it is not a quick thing. You know, you've got the watershed, and acquiring all the land, and all the things that go into that. It's a long process, so certainly, we've got to do all that we can to conserve, and that goes back to the conservation question. I think it's critical with it being 12 feet down now. It should not be 12 feet down at this point of the year. We should really have a lot more water than we do. So certainly, the pipeline coming back online will make a huge difference. We've had, I believe it's 28% of our water over the last two to three years has been cut, so it's a big deal. I'm not sure if you're aware of the pump stations in Lake Texoma, but they've recently moved the border between Texas and Oklahoma. I just learned about this recently over the last couple of months, and when they did that, they drew out all but one of our pump stations. So then it became a federal issue, so besides all the zebra muscles and all the things that were going on with that and the controversy there, we had this federal problem with water. So, you know, there's going to be, okay, thank you, there's going to be, you know, certainly things that we need to do to conserve the water and identify new sources.
Thank you. We have a question for Ann from Pam.
Okay. This question is for Ann. In the same article, both of the other candidates agreed that year-round water restrictions were reasonable. However, you disagreed, citing you believe water decisions are best handled at the local level and not region-wide. Can you give specific examples of what local officials can do to accomplish your goal of supplying sufficient water to residents and businesses staying within the current stage-three restrictions?
Well, yes, Pam. I am all about keeping water local. The last thing we need are water wars going on, and I think right now, believe it or not, I'm quite optimistic on the water issue. We have had the pipeline from Texoma going to the water treatment facility plant in Wiley. I think of that as an engineering feat that was done inside of a year and a half time, and more water treatment facility plants are online with more pipelines coming. Now that said, you cannot legislate water, okay? And we need more water. We need this drought to end, and what concerns me, what we are going to have to watch is, from Prop 6, this SWIFT fund was created. It's called the State Water Improvement Fund for Texas. $2 billion with a B upfront money to fund water projects throughout Texas. Now, that sounds good, but we're going to have to be careful because we have appointees that are going to be doling out this money to states, I mean, to cities, towns, and counties, and the criteria is going to be based on density of population and how well these cities, towns, and counties conform to conservation. So you have the carrot out there with the water funds, but they're also going to be asking for compliance at cities, towns, and counties on things like conservation, and that, to me, gets into a little bit of social engineering and a little bit of nanny-state-ism, if I can say that. So I like things kept local. Our good mayors, they know best what is going on with their communities, what they need to do, restrictions if needed to be put into place, and I just don't like that. I like to keep things local. I don't like state or federal getting their hands in at the local. I'm all about local accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Cole, do you have any other question for Susan this time?
Yeah, Susan. I'll stand up since I'm the shortest one up here. You can't see me anywhere. In the area of transportation and infrastructure, for both the current 835,000 residents of Collin County as well as the people moving here, what actions would you take to ensure clean air, and why do you think that's important?
Clean air is very important. We actually live in a non-attainment zone, so we certainly have to pay attention to our air quality. I'm sure, being here in Frisco, many of you recognize the excide issue that came before us all in the testing that was done there, and so air quality is a big issue. With more people coming, and they bring their cars, and all of that as well, so certainly, economic development and infrastructure is very important. I would love to see us encouraging businesses to move here to Texas, so that our people aren't driving on the tollways, and driving down to Dallas, and driving to other counties to go to work. I think that's certainly going to cut down. If we could just have more businesses here for those folks that are coming, they're not having to drive nearly as far. So economic development's a huge part of that, and infrastructure, just working with the counties, working with the cities, and the mayors and the councils to develop our county and those unincorporated areas.
Pam, do you have a question for Ann?
I do. Ann, I wanted to follow up a little bit with what you said about the Proposition 6. I believe in the article you were quoted as saying that there is a possibility of the misuse of funds. What entity do you believe will misuse the funds, and how? And what specific steps, as a citizen watchdog, will you take to protect those funds?
Well, I'm not saying that there's a particular group or person that would misuse funds, but whenever, ladies and gentlemen, you have that much money sitting in a fund, we need to watch what happens. We see in transportation how transportation funds are diverted, and we just don't want this to become a slush fund and get away from us. So that was really my point on that, and that's what I have to say on that. Whenever there is a fund created, we need to all be citizen watchdogs. We need to put pressure on the legislature to make sure money appropriated to something goes towards that thing. And again, I will reiterate, I get very nervous when I see criteria set up like high population, dense population, adherence to regulation on conservation. Yes, we do need, we do need criteria on water conservation, but we don't want to turn into a nanny-state. And sometimes this type of thing, when factors are decided based on dense population, on regulating to specific things, you can, it can get too cumbersome, and you get away from the local control.
Thank you. Mayor, do you have a question for Mark, please?
Let me go ahead and use it. Commissioner Reed, in, as a county commissioner, you currently receive a full-time six-figure salary and full-time benefits from the taxpayers. Question, if elected, will you serve as a commissioner full-time, or will you continue to work at your current business in Dallas in addition to your position on the court?
I will be a full, excuse me, I will be a full-time. I am a full-time commissioner right now. This is a full-time job, as the mayor indicated. We get paid a full-time salary, so I will be there doing my job 100% of the time. As with regard to my other business, I long ago put a succession plan in place in that business. I knew that I needed good people to run the business, so that I, for no other reason, could have the freedom to go on vacation. Small thing, but it's important. So my business will continue. My wife has worked with me in the business, has been our office manager, and is now our controller as well. She's worked with me for 28 years. She will still be there, and I have good people there that can do what they need to do, run the business. That frees me up to do what I'm passionate about, which is get involved with government. So I will be a full-time commissioner.
Thank you. Pam, we have a question for Ann.
Yes. Ann, do you believe the county should work with cities to form partnerships to benefit the citizens? If so, give an example of what type of partnership and its benefits.
I absolutely do. I absolutely believe that the county should be that supportive mechanism and support these wonderful, strong mayors that we have in our, in our county. And I think a great example of this is the one-to-one match on transportation projects. The county has discretionary funds that they are ready and willing to spend, and then it throws it back to the local control of the cities and towns. They can decide what projects they need to do, what is the most important to their community, and then there can be a partnership between the county and the municipalities to really leverage those dollars, make them go further, and I am all about that kind of partnership. I think it's exciting, and I think it's very effective, and will serve the citizens' well.
Thank you. Phyllis, do you have a question for Susan?
Susan, as the only Frisco candidate, you're aware that if you go south on the DNT, you pay a toll, and if you go east or west, you pay a toll of $121. What steps will you take to ensure that Frisco does not become landlocked to the north, requiring additional tolls with the continued fast growth?
That's a great question as well. Certainly, we're getting close to that, being landlocked right now, and it's a concern for all of us. There's just not enough money for transportation. I've said this before, and there is 47% of our gas tax is going, it's diverted, it's going to education, 25% is going to education, there's going to tourism, it's going to many different things, and so that does not help the problem. So we've certainly got to figure out a different way to fund transportation. I think that's going to be one of those creative things that we have to work together with the cities and with the county, and figure out how we're going to fund these roads. We've got the outer loop, and everything I've heard about the outer loop is going to be a toll road, and so I'm very concerned about that. Certainly, I understand the user-pay system. I understand a business of convenience when you're talking about toll roads, but we are very much told enough already, as far as the Tea Party is saying, told enough already. It is a problem, and so we've certainly got to work together with our municipalities and figure out how we are going to fund transportation, and work with our state legislators down in Austin, how we're going to fund transportation. We've got federal dollars that come in, and state dollars that come in, and the counties and the cities partner with those, and we have got to come up with a different plan. So I will be working directly on that problem. I think it's critical that we come up with some creative funding options.
Mayor, do you have another question for Mark?
Hey. Commissioner Reed, in that same article, go back to water, it looks like, you stated you are against cities restricting building permits as a way of conserving water, and that there are devastating consequences for doing so. Give us an example of the devastating consequences, as you stated, and who would they affect?
Well, the question in the, in the article asks about what could happen, what, excuse me, what could happen if we don't have enough water? And one of the options ultimately, if we don't have enough water, is to begin restricting building permits, and that, to me, would be devastating for a city to be put in a position to do that. Frisco is a thriving and prosperous town. Frisco and McKinney are in the middle of the district, they're in the middle of their life, they're growing, they're booming, and have to shut that growth off completely by stopping building permits or restricting building permits would be devastating to the city. So I think it's a, is a, is a last measure resort if we get into, where we just don't have enough water. I don't know if the cities would do that or not, but it could be something that they might be forced to do. That's why it's important that we pursue all of our alternatives for water, conservation, working with the state and the federal legislators to streamline the permitting process, look at groundwater, desalinization, pipelines, whatever we can look at to get water in here, because we, this is a thriving, growing community, and we have to have water to keep that going.
Thank you. Do either of you on the panel have any follow-up questions on those three questions of each one of the candidates, before we open up to all the questions? All right. Phyllis, do you have a question you want to ask any of the candidates here?
One of the questions I have here that someone in the audience had asked, we were going to talk about, would be, should the county continue working with cities for economic development, like Blue Cross Blue Shield Building in Richardson, or participating in tax increment financing zones like the current one in Frisco around Stone Bar Mall? So what I would be asking you is, do you think we should continue to all work together?
And which candidate?
Well, how about Mark?
The primary role of county government in economic development is to keep taxes low and provide a fair and responsive judicial system. That's what Collin County does. We have one of the lowest tax rates in the state. We have an excellent judicial system, and that's where the majority of our efforts go in the county. With regard to more specifically targeted economic development, we do work with the cities. For instance, Stone Bar Mall is an excellent example, where the county worked with the city to create the tax abatements to help bring Stone Bar Mall to Frisco. We looked at another issue like that in Commissioners Court this week for an entity that's looking at coming to Plano, so I think that's very important. We also have the 50/3 program in the county, which provides a 50% tax abatement for three years for small businesses. That's a great program. We also have TERS, Tax Reinvestment Zones, and those other special zones within the county that help develop areas. I think all of those are important. We need to continue to do those things, but the primary driver on economic development does lie with the cities, and the county should be there to support them to the extent that we can.
Thank you. Pam? Do you have a question for any of the candidates?
Yeah, I'm going to ask this one for Susan. Susan, Collin County is generally thought of as a very affluent county. However, when we look at, a lot of, there's a lot of lower socioeconomic families here, and there is a big homeless problem here, which a lot of us seem to sort of close our eyes to. Is there anything that you can do as a Collin County Commissioner that could help organizations like the Collin County Boys and Girls Club, and like the Samaritan Inn, to be more successful with the programs where they retool people to go out in the business world?
Absolutely. It is a growing problem, and I think we have a bigger homeless problem here in Collin County than many of us believe and understand. I think there were 12 or 13 members of the Frisco class, the graduating class, that were homeless. I want to thank, I know Ann Harris is here somewhere, Ann, over here, with City House, and just the work that they do, and reaching out to our homeless youth here in Collin County. You know, we have Habitat for Humanity, we have the Samaritan Inn, we have many things that the county has already partnered with, these organizations, to address the homeless problem. I chair our Collin County Healthcare Advisory Board, which is our indigent health care that's state-mandated, so we certainly are doing extra things with that fund to try to boost health care for our indigent population, and make sure that we're taking care of them adequately, and I'm very proud of the county for what they've done with Project Access, and coming in and creating this voluntary network of doctors and hospitals, and they've really given the patients a lot more dignity. As they go and get treatment, they're going to the private doctor's offices, which is wonderful, and they don't feel like a number, and it saved the county unlocked a million, thousands and thousands of dollars, so that's a big deal as well. But certainly, there's more that we can always do to reach out to this population, but it's important that we work with Samaritan Inn and these other organizations, getting, you know, federal grant monies and funding that we can allocate. Hello? Yeah. So, yes, there's many things that we can do as commissioners, and I applaud the court for all that they have done so far. Thank you.
All right. Mayor, do you have a question for Ann?
Sure. Most candidates discuss what they will do when elected. What policy or procedure or action will you undo if elected?
Well, what a question. I, if anybody knows me, my, for the last five years, I have dedicated myself solely to the local and county level. I am a citizen watchdog. I attend 95% of my Prosper Town Council meetings tonight, and my mayor's here to attest to that fact. He says I have a take-no-prisoners approach, and you know what? I find that a huge compliment, ladies and gentlemen, because we do not have enough engaged citizens paying attention to the local and county. I have done that, and I stand for individual rights, and, you know, when we talk about, and this is kind of going off to Susan's last question there, but when we talk about the homeless population, which in Collin County has seen a surge, 44, at 44%, and a lot of times this isn't talked about, these people are off the radar, but what I'm going to say, and this may sound controversial to you, I think that we need to encourage businesses, churches, to proactively get involved in charity. I do not think it is the place of the county to take tax dollars, turn around, and do charitable works with that. Do you know why? Because that, that, that is not charitable when you take someone's money, turn around, and give it to somebody else. That's wealth redistribution, and yes, we, you know, in the back of our mind, these are done for good things, but I do not, I think that charity should be kept charity, as charity, and voluntary, as a voluntary act, and I think that municipal and county business with tax dollars should go to what the taxes are taken up for. So I, where I do, I love the fact of doing good works, but I do not think that citizens' tax dollars should be used for that purpose, so...
I think it's important to also recognize that the Healthcare Advisory Board, where we advise on those funds, it is money that was from the selling of our hospital, our county hospital, and so when that money was put into a fund, we allocate funds from there as well. And then, as far as the other charitable work and things, I agree with you. I mean, I certainly agree with you. I think that's important to point out, that we don't use taxpayer dollars for the citizens' support, but it's a state-mandated thing when we talk about our indigent population.
Yes.
We have up to $30,000 a person per year, so it's important.
Mark, do you want to comment on that? See, you're reaching for the microphone.
Well, we're rambling around, we're all script, so...
But we're on message. But we're on message.
Well, I do, there are specific core functions that governments have, and we need to stay focused on the core functions. As Ann suggested, the indigent health care work that the county does is excellent. We have Project Access that takes care of people in the hospital, it takes care of all of our indigent care, up to 100% of the poverty level, which is nearly five times what the state mandate requires. We also have partnerships with Prime Care to provide primary care for our indigent population, and we partner with private charities throughout the county. We approved $45,000, $50,000 in funds to private charities in the, in court on Monday to go to some of the private organizations in town that give another layer of protection for folks that need help. The Commissioners Court recently approved over a million dollars in grants to four excellent charities here in town: City House, Endless Place, Habitat, and...
Samaritan.
Samaritan Inn, thank you, Gerald. So we do a lot of good work here in Collin County.
Thank you. All right. Next, we're going to have a couple of, one more question, each from each of the panelists, each one of the individuals, unless we have a follow-up comment on the last question. If not, they'll give the, each panelist one question to a candidate, and you can have one minute to respond, and then we're going to go into ask the questions of each one of the candidates. So, Phyllis, you have one question for one person, and then one minute to respond.
Okay. Don't say I'm trouble. Fall on you there.
I'm sorry.
I really have a question I really would like for them all to answer.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay. This, I think, this is really, really important, and so I really would like to have a brief answer from each of you on this one. Recently, Commissioner Hill sent out announcements that there were different positions among the members of the Commissioners Court on how to spend the remaining transportation bond funds. So the three ideas presented by Commissioner Hill, I'd like to hear your comments on those. Should we allocate the funds to county thoroughfares? Should we allocate the funds evenly to cities for critical projects? Or should we allocate the funds evenly between the four precincts? Or do you have another idea?
I'm happy to answer that. I was not at court yesterday, so I'm looking forward to watching the discussion. In fact, it looked like there was only 30 minutes worth of time on the, online, so I'm not sure what's going on with that, but anyway, I hear it was maybe a couple hours worth of the discussion, and so I look forward to finding out more about what was discussed at court on this issue. But certainly, having these extra funds that we are going to be allocating, I am in favor of looking at the Greater Mobility Plan, the goals that we have for Collin County, and making sure that we are taking care of mobility throughout the county. I think that's the first critical, important thing that we need to look at, but at the same time, we do need to be working with our cities, and we need to be talking to them about the projects that are important to them as a city, and I think it's looking at those higher priorities throughout the county, and then going back, it's a blend of all three of those, allocating monies back to each individual precinct, and going back to those cities and saying, what are the projects that are important to you as a city council? So, thank you.
You covered some different areas there. Yesterday in court, we had briefings on the new mobility plan that's about to be published. We had briefings on tax credits that are becoming available or may become available, and we had a briefing on the issue of the excess dollars that we have from the bond program. It should be, you should know that the bond program still has about $90 million left to spend. It'll be spent over the next three years. That's driven by the cities. When the cities have funds available to, for roads, they set the priorities, the county matches those funds, and that's one bucket of money. The excess funds are funds that are left over from the bond program, and we're discussing how best to use those. There were several plans presented. There will be a lot more discussion. I personally don't care for the plan where you give it to the four commissioners to go spend as they please. I would prefer... I would prefer that the Commissioners' Court work with the cities, find out the priorities, and then take a leadership role and do some strategic planning with the money, considering the city's priorities, but also considering mobility throughout the county. So that's what I'd like to see.
If it ain't broke, don't fix it. I think what's in place now is dynamite, the one-to-one match. It's not appropriate for the county to be going in and doing transportation work at the municipal level, so this one-to-one match is a partnership. The mayors know best what they need for their individual communities, towns, and cities. So I'm all about the one-to-one match, and leveraging those transportation dollars, which are few and far between, and making those count and go in stretch. So I think what's in place now is fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. With that said, we're running out of time, so I'm going to have the panelists ask each one of the questions now, that they're, candidates asked each other. So I will start with Mayor Massa, and he will ask them a question. In other words, each one of the candidates were able to write a question to ask each of their opponents there. They do not know what the other one asked, and they don't know what they're going to be answering to, and so, this will be a question, I'm not going to tell you who actually wrote the question either, so...
You can tell them that I didn't write it.
Y'all wrote amongst yourselves.
Commissioner Reed, and this has, looks like multiple questions in one, so I'm happy to repeat any of them, because I know it's hard to track who's going to be answering. Regarding the current controversy involving the 2007 transportation bond funds available for use, how did you vote in the 2007 transportation bond election? Did you vote for the bond election, which would put you at odds with Judge Self, or did you vote against the bonds, which would put you against 80% of the taxpayers in the county?
That's easy. I've been on the other side, so I hate it. Yeah, that's easy, I don't remember. Sounds like a politician, doesn't it? An issue has been made about my voting record. Like so many Americans, I was active, very active in all sorts of volunteer work, leadership positions in volunteer work throughout my life. I only got active in government in late 2008, 2009. So, to be perfectly honest, I don't recall how I voted in that bond election. I just don't. I don't know, I didn't know that there was controversy about those bond funds, other than prioritization with the cities. As Ted Cruz said at the Lincoln Day Dinner the other night, the most significant event that's happened in the last five years in this nation is the rise of the grassroots. And he said that the grassroots that have come up in the last five years are the people that are going to pull this nation back from the brink of disaster. So, I don't, I wasn't active enough to where I remember that bond program specifically in 2007, but I am active now, and I've had the privilege of doing a lot of work with the Republican Party, the grassroots and the Republican clubs. I've learned a lot, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Anne, do you have a question, or one of the candidates for each other?
Yes, I have this one for Anne. Anne, this is a Republican primary and not a general election. What have you done for the party prior to running for office, including what roles, positions, or chairs have you held that qualify you to be elected to a Republican county commissioner's position?
Well, I'm 51 years old, I have been a lifelong Republican. I voted for Ronald Reagan the first year I was eligible to vote in 1980, and I did in 2000 and 2004, I did some very casual campaigning for George W. Bush when I lived in Plano. However, I have always been a staunch conservative, but I really couldn't find my niche, I couldn't find a vehicle in which really to get involved, and maybe that's a fault of my own, but when the Tea Party emerged in 2008, and I attended a Tea Party rally, I was queued in with people locally in my community. I have been a Tea Party leader since 2009, when the Prosper Tea Party came into being, and that has given me a way to go about, and I have done a lot of constitutional study. I have learned that the way to make change is at the local, county, and state level, and to do this by engaging your local representatives. It's very simple. You show up at meetings and you ask tough questions. And so, I am not perhaps the Republican Party darling, but I respect the Republican Party, and I have been very active.
Thank you. Phyllis, do you have one? Susan?
Yes, Susan. In recent forums, you seem to suggest Collin County will have a B-Team staff due to the changes in our retirement system. If this is true, why do you believe this, and what would you have done differently?
Well, my comments were about doing the changes, and I am actually very, very happy with the outcome of this pension retirement system plan that we've come up with. I really want to commend Commissioner Webb for the work that he did in coming up with the idea. My concern has been all along, even since 2010, of taking this pension plan and with the public safety in general, I'm very, very concerned. I do not want the B-Team. I think it's critical that we have good officers on the streets. If we don't give them the tools that they need, if we don't pay them according to the whole job pool, we've got to compete with the job pool in this whole area, these municipalities all around here. You know, when they have a job opening, they're going to have hundreds of people come in and apply. I wouldn't know why the sheriff only has a few, a handful. That's a concern for me. I don't think it's fair to the officers that we have now to say, you need to go out on the streets, and we can't even guarantee you what kind of officer is going to come in and be your partner now. If we can't recruit, if we can't attract and retain good people to protect our community, it's going to be a problem. So, it can be a human tragedy, it can be, you know, a liability issue for the county as well, which is going to cost us a whole lot more money. So, I'm very, very concerned, but I'm happy with the plan that we have now, and I commend the court for it.
Thank you. Let's go back, Mayor, we have, this time, we're going to have y'all, same kind of questions. We have another question that was written between the candidates. They'll have one minute to respond, and I think that will about put us on point for us to be finished with our meeting today. So Mayor, do you have another question that you have for Mark?
This is the same thing for other candidates, right? Okay.
Yes, we're off the hook, it's not that.
Commissioner Reed, you initially started a business in Dallas County, then relocated it within Dallas County. The question is, with the economic growth of Collin County, why did you not relocate, move your business to Collin County in order to stimulate growth here?
One of my, I grew up in Richardson. I started, my family in Richardson, I started my business in Richardson, and a lot of my corporate clients, like Texas Instruments, are in Richardson, so it makes sense to be near my corporate clients. The, I've lived in Collin County for, what is it, 17 or 18 years, Janice?
18 years.
18 years. I've paid taxes in Collin County. Of course, the taxes that the business pays are in Dallas County, but I've lived here, and I've paid my taxes here, and just never thought about moving the business here. I guess if we'd had the 53 program earlier, then I could have done that, but I have money, so I've not done that.
Thank you. Anne?
Okay, this question is for Anne. Do you feel that there is an unfair disparity between county services provided to the urban cities versus the rural cities in Precinct One or other parts of Collin County? If so, what specifically would you do differently?
Well, I think just by, there are differences, just by the municipalities have more development, have more infrastructure in place, I mean, that's just the given, that the unincorporated areas are going to have less mechanism in place to, you know, like the Sheriff's Department and Fire Department, Police Department, or the Sheriff's Department. I think that's just the nature of the county and the unincorporated areas, and I think that the county job is to be focused on the unincorporated areas, to support where the county is, and I think that's why I'm the dynamite choice for county commissioner, because I live up in Prosper. I live closer to where the growth is happening, in the unincorporated areas. So yes, I think it is a core function of the county to provide services to the unincorporated, that's very important, and those people pay county taxes, and they deserve the best services their money can buy.
Thank you. Last one, Phyllis.
Okay, Susan. What changed your mind about deciding to run against the appointment named by Judge Self when you initially said you would not run if not appointed?
I'm so glad that you asked that question. I've been looking forward to answering this question, because I've heard it through the whisper campaign a long time, so I think it's great. I think full disclosure or transparency is very, very good, so, you know, I was initially not planning on running. I really had considered that I would just allow this process, the appointment process, to go through. I've been accused of not respecting the process, and I want to tell you something, folks, this is the process. This is the process, the primary is the process. I respect the voice of the voters. I certainly respect Judge Self and the process that he took us through to interview us and consider us all as candidates, and I don't want to diminish that at all. I certainly respect him, but I respect the voters. I respect your voice, and I think it's critical that if you believe that you're the best candidate, you have an obligation to run. You really do. I mean, what if our founding fathers did not challenge, there is this theme that I keep hearing about, we shouldn't challenge authority. What if our founding fathers didn't challenge authority? What if they just said, you know what, we'll just respect the throne and not do, you know, what we did? We've got freedom and liberties today, because people pledge their lives and their fortunes and their sacred honor on our behalf. I think it's critical that if you believe you're the right candidate, you get out there and run. So, this is the process, and certainly, you know, I have a change of heart, and it's my liberty to do so.
Well, thank you all very much. We really, really appreciate all the candidates. Thank you.